Yes.
Okay.
So what I suggested to Alice and I think Paul was when we do reformat it, um, we can just readopt the whole thing, which is what we did maybe 15 years ago.
Yep.
Just at, at town meeting and just tell people this is really, it's not substantive. It's just.
Right.
You know, making the changes and conforming things to each other and some of the references.
Yep.
Are wrong.
Right.
And some of the numbering isn't ideal. Um, that's putting it, that's kind of an understatement. But I think for the most part, it kind of gets the job done.
Yep.
Um.
All right, we can get back to the other business.
Yeah.
All right, so 7:01 will indeed be immediately. By the warrant.
Oh, 7:10. I told them 7:10.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah. If we get to it before then, we can skip over and come back.
Okay.
All right, so first order of business is to review except the minutes from 12:06. And, uh, somebody had an update, which I think.
I know.
Email. I know what it was. You've sent it out twice.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it.
All right, I'll motion to accept the minutes from the December 16th meeting.
Second.
All in favor? All right, so now we're going to open the public hearing to the closure of certain roads to winter maintenance. And, um, so it's now 7:02. Um, so these are the same two roads we closed forever. And they are the Moorehill Road from the transportation to North Taylor Road. And Cottle Hill from, I just said from Caravan to Caravan. I think that's essentially how it goes now. So obviously, Caravan family number, I think they're the same family, right? At each end, if you will, so. The public hearing is now open. Anybody have any comments? Hearing that, I would call for a vote.
Motion.
Would you?
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Motion to accept the closure of, um, road to winter maintenance, both Moorehill from the transportation to North Taylor and Cottle Hill from one Caravan property to the other Caravan property.
I'll second that. Uh, in favor? And parenthetically, I'll note that, uh, definitely before I should have done this in September or October, but yeah, these things happen. So anyways, it's official now. Um, Lee, by the way, last year actually put, actually like really closed the Moorehill Road, like foot rocks and. He has his reasons for that, but.
It really worked, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It made it so the road wasn't horrible.
Yeah, it made it so the road wasn't horrible, speaking.
Spring.
From someone who knows the road well. So, you know, Lee has, as far as I'm concerned, free reign to do that. It's what he wants to do.
Yep.
It's still obviously open for public easement, but not for travel, if that's what he does, so. Yeah. Um, okay, so the next public hearing, which we will now open at 7:04, is the public hearing, um, for the adoption of the select board remote meeting policy. And this is. I guess I didn't use my laptop. Did I take one? Hold on a second. I gotta print out a copy for us. We got something to find.
I've got one. Oh, yeah. I've got one.
You have one we can find, Ron?
Yep.
How do you do? All right, so what this is all about is the, uh, and I want to publicly thank Sue for keeping us honest on this. Um, what this is all about is during COVID times, the governor had passed an executive order, emergency order, I should say, uh, that allowed, including allowing municipalities to hold meetings, you know, through Zoom or whatever, however they needed to do it, just to keep on doing business. When the emergency order ended, legislature at about the same time passed a new law that allowed for boards, all kinds of boards and committees, um, to adopt their own remote meeting policies. But the only way that they could have remote meetings would be if the individual committees adopted a policy on that. So alls I did was went to MMA, downloaded their example policy. Um, and literally, the only change that I made afterward, I looked at some other towns as well, they had, they obviously had lawyers, spent thousands of dollars to make a one-page document, no sense of the word. A one-page document is like an eight-page document. And, um, the one line that I added that, that wasn't in the MMA example was. I will highlight it here.
I think it's on the other side, maybe. Nope.
Okay, the very last paragraph, uh, sentence on the first side, "This may include screen sharing of documents being discussed." So, uh, the context for that is "The body will make all documents and materials to be considered by the body available electronically or otherwise to the public who attend remotely, to the extent, to the same extent customarily available to the public whom attend in person." Yada, yada, yada. That doesn't say yada, yada, yada. Um, but because things come before us, you know, with no pre-planning or whatever, something just comes in, like literally, we might literally just be screen sharing that. It's not like something that's all printed out that we would normally pass out. But I did notice in, uh, I think it was Wilton and some of the other towns, they had included, you know, kind of screen sharing in there. So anybody in the room that's not on the slot would have any opinions on that.
It's okay. I included it as a draft for the committee.
Hello.
Oh, hey, Fred.
Not time, hi. Not time for a.
Yeah.
Uh, you're, you're going to be up momentarily, so don't go far.
Oh, I will.
Is Ron Lockwood?
Well, it's not there.
Is Ron Lockwood here?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, there, uh, Mark is recording remotely.
Oh, okay, because I've got his card. I want to give it to him.
Oh, I can give it to him. I see him a lot.
I sent two for him personally.
All right, so anyways, um, that's kind of the setup. So essentially this policy, um, one of the things I want to highlight, which was mentioned by MMA Legal, was that, um, the MMA legal team as a kind of collective group, their opinion, uh, for the emergency nature of this would include, you know, COVID situations like this. So in other words, the state law allows for, uh, remote meetings to come into play when there was some kind of emergency. And I'm not reading the actual, you know, language here, but that was outside of this actual pol, this actual policy that, that it was their legal opinion at MMA that, you know, situations involving COVID, et cetera, would be reason enough to, for a, an individual committee or board like us to decide that, okay, we're going to conduct this meeting, we're going to allow a person X to Y, whatever, to attend remotely and to vote. Okay? So select boards have always been barred by main statute from voting unless present. So I just want to mention it specifically because it could be that one of us needs to attend remotely or it could be that we all need to attend remotely, but with the adoption of this policy, it would allow us to do that as long as we have some valid, you know, emergency or whatever. So obviously, right now, it's all about the COVID situation, so. Um, so yeah, so that's my thoughts on it. Does anybody on the board, and then we'll look it up to the public, if some of the other thoughts are concerned?
I'm happy with it.
Any public comment? All right, well, the, uh, I guess we'll close the public hearing and move up on it. So we're closing the public hearing at, uh, 7:09. And, uh, I guess I'll motion that the select board adopt the select board remote petition, uh, participation policy as written.
That's it.
All in favor? All right, so let's get our fancy blue pens and sign that. So it's 12:02. We should probably just make a copy. I would think that the clerk would have to get the original.
No.
I think that's how it has to go, but we'll, we'll make a copy before we give it to her. All right, uh, so are you guys ready to go, Wes?
We're ready.
All right, okay.
Close out the, close out your meeting.
I did.
Oh, you did?
Before we voted, yeah. All right, so now we're going to open at, uh, 7:10. We're going to open the public hearing for the adoption of the ordinance review committee remote meeting policy. With that, I'll give the floor to the chair.
Okay, so, uh, what we did is we just took the draft policy that the select board had proposed for consideration, and we just put ordinance review committee at the top. So it's going to piggyback onto the policy that the select board just adopted for themselves and, uh, apply it to the ordinance review committee. I will note that we have a quorum. And, um, this will allow us to have our first meeting remotely on January 6th, and that has been, um, posted on the website. And I think there's already people that want to come to our meeting who've seen it. So I think given the circumstances with COVID, that this is something that we should do for well-being of everybody. So that is really cool. Do any other members want to add?
You said it very well.
Yeah, thank you.
It sounds good. I don't think we have any comments, so it is 7:12. I guess we'll close the public hearing.
Yeah, no.
And you guys can vote.
Okay, so with that, um, I'll entertain a motion.
I know that we adopted the policy as presented, the remote participation policy for the ordinance review committee.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Raise your hand. It's a vote.
All right, there you go. So do you sign, all of you?
I have three copies. I can sign one of them.
Well, at least sign one of them so we can give it to the clerk to be our.
Let's just draft on this.
This call just printed.
I printed it first.
I printed it out, so it's, there's no draft.
Does it say ordinance review committee at the top?
Yep, yes.
Oh, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's the date?
I don't have a.
Almost Christmas, guys.
I want to just note that time in the votes, half minutes. Seven, twelve, this meeting.
Will you give us links to it? For the second, uh, the sixth, January 6th meeting?
It's, it's all, it should be right on the town website right now, but I can send it to you.
No, if it's on there.
Yeah, it should be posted already.
Okay.
Yeah. Hopefully, I did it right.
I'm sure you did.
I've had a lot of coaching, like, on, on the spur of the moment from Paul on Zoom meeting.
So all boards would hold a public hearing, have something similar to this, sign it and give it to you.
Yes.
I don't know whose pen it's supposed to be.
Well, just to be clear, if any other, if any other boards or committees also wish to invoke this,
Yeah, we do.
they have to hold a public hearing.
Yes.
It has to be announced, you know, seven days in advance, of course, of course. So you guys just piggyback on us.
So just as a matter of procedure, um, I think we need to adjourn our O R C meeting within your meeting so that we can leave and you can.
Right, you, you may leave.
So, motion, motion to adjourn.
Which time is it?
Thank you.
I did. Michelle, I second.
I am.
Like a library.
I'm 14, wreck of time.
No, right.
Seconded, yeah.
Because before we had heard about this, the Board of Appeals was talking about similar.
Yeah, very informed.
Similar situation.
I got onto this like day after.
Who has those signed? She has a signed copy. Do you have?
She does.
Have we got a copy of it before we leave? Thank you, guys, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, thank you.
Good luck with your puppy.
Even though you make fun of my phone.
Can you what?
Never make me fun my phone.
It's one of those foot phones, you know, like. Yeah. The 1940s.
Oh, the, oh, right, right. I'm being strange.
Oh, boy.
I actually had a smartphone that I was learning to use, and my dog crunched it.
Thank you all. All right, so, um, I'm going to suggest that we, uh, we could interrupt the order and allow Diane to, uh, um. Hey, Diane? Diane?
Diana, what's your name?
I've Peter, Peter's late, Diane.
You know, and I can just, I can just leave and pick it up another time.
All right, so, um. So kind of a last, last little addition to, to the agenda here. So five seasons after their annual renewal of their liquor license.
Oh, I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, I don't believe we've held an official public hearing in my whole tenure here because they've been such longtime holders of licenses and, you know, without complaints, we essentially rubber stamped it.
Yep.
So, Anna, you did, you did mention under your breath that there was one minor complaint that wasn't associated with the liquor?
Yes, the noise.
It was a noise complaint. Are you aware of the noise complaint?
Um, I'm thinking there could have been one this summer from our neighbor when we had some Camp Laurel counselors that were at the property.
Right.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So it was all.
I, I, I wasn't aware. Anna mentioned it. I mean.
Oh, and I didn't know it went any further than a call to us, and we talked to Keith, and Keith took care of it, and that's all I know.
I just want to be clear that we can, um, re-sign your, your renewal without a public hearing as long as there's been no, um, you know, formal complaints or whatever. And I'm not so sure that this qualifies the, I don't think it.
I think it was just a question.
Yeah, I think she handled it.
It wasn't a formal complaint of, okay, so we're, we're in.
We, we didn't receive the complaint, right? Did it come to the slot, man?
I don't recall seeing it personally.
Team is like, uh, just a question about noise ordinance, but I think they.
Okay, so it wasn't a complaint about, uh, their liquor license or their, how they're running the business. Okay, I just wanted to make, make sure that we're not bypassing a public hearing, you know, accidentally. And I don't think we are in this case, so you guys have any, uh, concerns? So this, again, this would be many years in a row where we just, you know, simply sign the renewal and off they go.
Right.
Diane, can I have your last name?
Gerow. Oh, G E R O W.
All right, so.
Thank you.
With that, I would motion that we, uh, sign a, uh, on-premise liquor license renewal for five seasons.
Second.
I don't know if that's the official name, but. Uh, you seconded it. So I, I motion Bob second. All in favor? All right, so, all right, so you, you got the little arrows on where you need to sign?
I just, yes. I don't know where I shall start with it. It's just in this box right here, just one, two, three signatures.
And, you know, um, the other, uh, there's, there's three license holders in town, there's flying con variety and there's the, and the. There's flying con variety and there's the, and the cafe. And I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I know there's rumors about various businesses maybe selling, like the cafe, for example, or maybe changing hands. But I'm not so sure if that triggers a different requirement. So future applicants for any establishment that might change hands, might need to.
Oh, yeah.
Might need to take that into account.
Scott Horn will.
Yeah, Scott will be.
I thought a liquor license went with the business if you sold the business.
Well, I believe it does from an ongoing perspective, but I'm not sure if there's any different. I'm just saying, I don't know. It may or may not be different requirements for the renewal, that's all. Yeah.
Gets a little tricky.
I just don't know.
So if they have a liquor license in Belgrade, do they have to get one in Mount Brumman as well?
Yeah.
Every town, yeah.
Every town, okay.
Yeah, that's true. We had to just redo all the licenses. Didn't have to go forward.
I think, just, just because I'm here, I think that we just found out that licenses, like, might not be transferable to purchasers. Like, they have to go through their own process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's what we just found out through the state. That would make sense.
But it doesn't end like on the day of a sale, does it, or does it?
I.
That, that would be tricky.
I know.
No, you have to, yeah, you have to do it before you.
You do? So that's something good for.
You gotta be on the bomb.
Yeah, so our, our small businesses in town will need to remind us of that, just in case a business were.
That looks wonderful, though.
Happy, happy.
And she is all happy, happy. I thank you very much for your time.
Yes.
You have a good night.
Yep, thank you.
All right, so, you know, we didn't package it in the full stuff to be Christmas week, but we can see it adds other things to our business. But quick check, emergency manager, I believe you said that Mike Witzel.
Mike will do it.
So.
So should we talk to him? Bring him in and talk to him, or?
Well, yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say next step, we need to figure out, you know, first of all, I think we should have the vote. Let's make it official.
Right.
And once it's official that we voted him that, he needs to come in and get sworn in. And any of us could talk to him. We've all lobbied him to take the stuff.
Right.
Maybe you wanna call him back, because you, you pushed him over the edge, so to speak.
Are we appointing him?
Yes, we're appointing him.
So we're going to make up an appoint?
Yeah, uh, yeah, that's a good point, yeah. All right, so I would motion to appoint Mike Witzel to the, what's the official name of the position?
Emergency manager?
I think it's pretty much, you want an emergency manager or director, whichever you decide.
Is it municipal emergency manager?
You know, that's a good question. But before I hit that motion.
And what's the term? One year, three years, as long as he's willing, as long as breathing.
Let's see here.
Because things like, if he has to travel to Augusta for a meeting and stuff, he should be paid for the mileage, right? Or if he has to go to Augusta, I mean, to Bangor or Portland or something like that, he's not getting paid anything, so at least he should be covered for that.
Yeah, I mean, he would be covered under the overall town.
If he needs to get training and the costs for the training thing, he should be covered for. So we should be able to explain that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
And then when we do the budget, we ought to come up with some stipend next year.
We, we have to make sure that training definitely is necessary, but it wasn't considered in the budget, so kind of keep it down till July.
Yeah.
And figure out what he needs, so we can put it in the budget.
In order to be able to call him emergency manager, he needs to get that training. And maybe he can help us, Anna, on, you looked at NIMS. And I went through that all weekend, and I just couldn't, I wanted to see what the course was, looked like, and I could not find one.
Yeah.
And when I did find one, I said, is this really NIMS? Or is it something, so maybe Mike will be able to help us on that?
So, yeah, I felt.
Or Jason, are you? So, I don't know. I, I did some digging, and I don't know that I got anywhere.
So what term did we decide?
Life.
Life.
I don't think we should put the word life. I think we should say maybe indefinite.
Yes, indefinite.
We don't wanna have him thinking we're thinking it's a year or two. I'm just trying to look up on the state.
Oh, what they call it? I know.
And that's what we call it, civil defense.
Uh, yeah.
But I don't think that's a term.
Where'd I find that?
Well, I think it's safe to just call it.
Emergency manager. We can.
Manager, emergency director.
Yeah.
I see. So on the main emergency management agency website.
Yep.
I think they go as local emergency management director.
Yeah.
All right, so emergency management director.
Yeah.
Local.
Local.
Local. About to be confused with global.
Yes, or state or county or.
Stepping into a bigger role than.
Uh-oh, I just noticed a text from Mark, microphone question mark.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
I got the thing, oh.
We missed the public hearing.
Maybe it's okay now, but there was that question.
Do we have any of Mike's?
Oh, God, we got Nick.
Mike's contact information?
Oh, I hear this phone, but I don't think I have it here.
One moment.
Oh, no.
Well, it's not, boy, I've been so.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, that's probably.
Can you read it?
Okay, Mark says he can hear us. Oh, I know what it was. He sent me the thing one minute before I turned it off. Thanks, Mark.
I'll write this down for you.
Okay. Address, email, number.
Pokemon Drive.
All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, whenever you're ready, Alice, I'll go back to the motion.
Well, you can go ahead with that, and I'll catch you.
All right, so I'm gonna motion to appoint Mike Witzel to the local emergency management director position for an indefinite term.
Second.
All in favor? Yeah, and Mike, if you're listening at home, thank you so much. Yeah, obviously, we need to figure out what are the next steps and what areas we might have to have, and get him set up with all the right contact that he's going to need, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, he does.
Pretty much all town contact.
He probably knows a better.
The branch that's entire department, everything. So will you give him a heads up?
Do you have an address?
It's Pokemon Drive. I'm not sure what the number is.
Oh, wow. Yes, and he says he would love to know, it becomes like we'll figure out how we'd like him to interface with the main emergency management association.
Yeah, we probably need to let those guys know, too.
Yeah.
Although Mike knows a lot of people in the state, he might just call them and say, here I am. All right, so there's obviously more to do on that. Alice, we're gonna move to the next item. So Blake Hill Road project. So the latest on that is we've developed kind of a draft budget, just for the sake of argument. And we also have become aware that we may, may need to spend up to fifty thousand dollars on official engineering. And that would be including like bore holes. I mean, it's a, it's a huge nightmare of engineering. So the next step on that project is I'm going to reach back out to the state people, the engineers that we've dealt with in the past, and ask them if they're going to require the full tilt and fifty thousand dollar type big engineering, you know, plan, or if they would accept the less engineered, for lack of, lack of a better word, plan for a bridge in order for them to come through with their sixty percent, if that makes sense. You get that, Alice?
No.
So I'm gonna reach out to the state engineers.
Okay.
The ones that had kind of promised, if you will, that, like, air quote promise. They had promised that the state would, would subsidize sixty percent of the bridge. So the, I'm gonna go back to them and find out if a high-level engineering plan would suffice, or if they're going to insist for their sixty percent, that we have a full tilt engineering site evaluation, you know, it, it's like a fifty thousand dollar project just to have it engineered. So, so that's the next step now. So we, we have, we've, in talking to people, we've developed a rough idea that we think we can get it done for six hundred thousand dollars or less. It's rough, we're speaking, I thought of quote or whatever, but it's based on good information. The state had originally said a million and a half, a million seven five. That would be based on the state contracting for it. Well, you know, small towns work a little bit differently than the state, but if they're gonna hold us to state kind of standards for them to give us their sixty percent, it's gonna cost us a lot more money. And we also found out in talking to this one company who's offered some engineering advice, we'll call it, that it's about fifty thousand dollars more to use, I think they call it weathering steel? Does that sound like a thought?
Yeah.
And they recommend it because it's the kind of steel that you just put in and it lasts indefinitely. They just let it rust and it's designed to rust. Because a small town like this doesn't have a highway department that can go out there and sandblast it and paint it every, you know, twenty, thirty years or whatever. So, so it does cost, according to the guy I was talking to, about fifty thousand dollars more. But that would be included in the, you know, five fifty, six hundred thousand dollar type price range of weathering steel.
Yeah, I've never seen it work, but I've heard of it.
Um, I, it used to be that that would be an environmental question.
Well, that's a question I could ask the state guys, too, as well. I'll, I'll make a note of that, ask them about weathering steel. I believe the state's using it now, though. Because the problem is when they have to sandblast the bridges, the old ones, they're full of lead.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they have, you know, they encapsulate the whole, I mean, it's a real nightmare. So I almost think that they prefer the weathering steel, just whatever rust, as compared to sandblasting and all that sort of stuff. Weathering steel. All right, so that's kind of the latest on that. All right, so let's sign Mike's, wait, before we forget about that. Do you have a date on there? I'm trying to get the.
While you're on bridges, the Carl Hill Bridge, did you guys have to sign anything or vote on anything to put a ten ton limit on that bridge?
Oh, no, the state insisted, so that should be able to come down now.
The sign came down, but do we have to vote to take it down, or is it?
It was the state that asked for that. I believe they did have the sign.
So we don't have to? Go. Okay, he took the sign down.
All right.
Good.
All right. So the, there's a follow-up from last meeting. The, the transfer station manager shed is in place. And our, our, really swell volunteer, Paul Brady, I think volunteered to cut a window.
Yeah, we already bought the windows.
Yeah, yeah.
We got them pretty, one was a hundred and some, and the other two hundred.
Okay, great. Yeah, so that whole thing came in within budget, so that's great news, and she was pretty happy about it.
What was the budget on those?
Thirty-five hundred.
Okay, because we still have, we haven't gotten the bill for the window shed, so.
Okay, what was the bill to my?
Two thousand.
I think it was.
Twenty-seven fifty-one.
Thirty.
Twenty-seven fifty-one.
Okay, yeah, we got one ahead, running that for that. So anyway, that's in place, that's great, good news. We gotta think of something.
I talked with Nadine at Trio on Thursday, I think it was. And basically, I just wanted to introduce myself to her and told her I went through all the emails that were going around and, and I told her we were gonna push forward on this thing. And I wanted to get a price from her on anything that we need to get the thing going.
Yeah.
And I also wanted to, because we don't have the package for the payroll, so I wanted to get the price on that, just so we know if, if we're gonna go with it, we'll have a price.
That's separate from budgetary, right?
Right, so.
Yeah, we kind of, we never really talked much about that.
Right.
We've been focused on before, now we're new, focused on budgetary.
So hopefully.
Separate concerns on that, we'll have to be careful about.
We'll try to get, she was trying to get it to me before the meeting, but I didn't get it.
I also owe you guys the feedback that I got from Reed Field, Wayne, and Fayette. I have that in one document. I forgot to remember to flip that over to you. And I'll give it to Heather and Carrie as well.
Whatever's coming to me is gonna go to you guys, too.
You know, I never thought to ask about payroll, whether any of those towns are using it.
Yeah, they're all using it.
Are they using payroll?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It ties right in. She talked about it and.
Oh, she did, okay.
Yeah.
Does she, does this same lady?
Nadine.
Nadine, does she rep with all the towns around here?
Yeah.
So she knows what it is.
She knows. Nate Savage.
Yeah.
Nate. She knows him, because that's one of the things, in order to start the system going, there's like the five steps or four steps that they need. He has to do that first step.
Well, we did the SQL upgrade last year.
Right.
So that was a prerequisite going to the web version.
Right.
Which is a different front end, which is a prerequisite to going to the hosted version. And, and just to go back to briefly mention, when we first bought the web version, the board at the time was under the mistaken impression that that meant the hosted version.
Right.
And you're like, I don't know, that's not hosted, that just changes the interface to what you already have. But the part of what, what I asked in the email that I sent before you followed up to the, to the Trio people, I, I think they still owe us the product lifecycle question. So in other words, they're no longer selling what we currently have, but when does it go end of life?
Right.
I think that's something we need to answer. And then, you know, we also need to figure out if, you know, if we're gonna go all the way to hosted, which I hundred percent am in an opinion of that we should personally.
Right.
You know, what is the timeline or the sequence of events? I think I know the sequence of events. It just means web interface first, and then regardless of what modus we have, you can then go to the hosted version. So in my opinion, the hosted version, I believe, is gonna be a, not a big ticket, but a bigger ticket. So that, in my opinion, that could probably wait until, you know, July or whatever.
Right, right.
But it sounded like they said because we'd already bought budgetary, that they might be willing to, um, not work with us. That's the impression I got, and then you picked up with it after that.
Right.
But if you could find that out, that would be great.
So I'll see what she sends, and then I'll probably get back to her.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna make a note, I have right here, I'll try to do it before at least tonight, I have the one document where I took all the input from the town that I hadn't actually sent out yet. Trio doc. I'll send that out to everybody, everybody else.
I figured I didn't wanna do too much in the next two weeks, because it's just gonna be a kind of a waste of time. Get into the next year, and then we can push.
Yeah. Okay, other business. Anna, do you have anything to add, if that's not on the agenda?
No, thanks.
What was the Girl Scout?
Oh, the Girl Scouts wondered about having a box here in case people wanted to donate to the food bank, because it's hard to get to the food bank sometimes.
Speaking of a box here, we gotta clean up that vest of yours. That's like a transfer station and waiting area.
Yeah, the boxes, because I've been working downstairs to clean up that stuff. So I brought the boxes up, so you wouldn't have to go down for them.
I will mention that we got an email from one citizen and then two others piled on. So we now have three official complaints on the fire department side. We're letting the COVID officer take it from here to answer the specific question that one of these people had. I just wanna acknowledge. I just want to acknowledge that, we could get three people that don't like it out of the seventeen hundred residents. Not to say that there aren't more, but I want to recall.
They're all in the village?
Yeah.
Uh, no.
No?
No. Some people just don't like driving by it.
Can you get me the the warrant so I can start working on that, the soft copy you were gonna send me?
The what?
The warrant for the town meeting.
Oh, yeah, that's actually the whole town report, okay.
Right.
Now, Bob, do you have anything now?
Um, no, I don't think so.
Um, I, no, oh, sorry, I was just gonna say you did all these nice policies, I don't know if I've ever met.
Oh, yeah, the policies, oh, jeez, sorry. I did such a good job on those. Holy, good job, Anna.
It's seven forty, so we've gotta get done by eight.
Holy smokes.
So what we're talking about for anybody that's listening is we've had some, Alice, Alice kind of retyped up all the existing policies that we've already passed in the past. And we're looking at them all as a whole package. And there's several that Carrie kind of volunteered to do some update on, so Carrie, the floor is yours.
Okay, the.
Where do you want to go first?
Let's do the short one first, I combined two policies, the smoking and the drugs and alcohol policy into one.
We actually already passed, but we can certainly update our policy with a new date.
To me, it's prohibited substances, I think should all be together.
Okay.
Um, the smoking policy is much more involved than the drugs and alcohol, but at least it's all in one place.
Smoking specifically.
Yeah.
All right, and this uses the same language that.
That we passed, yeah.
And by the way, Alice, did you get that policy to the organization with?
Yeah, I don't know, did we get the money yet from them? Carrie?
I don't know, they've gotten money for Adrian place, I'd have to go back and look, I don't.
Okay, um, we did get the smoking, non-smoking signs.
Okay, that's from MMA?
No, that's from the, the place. Right.
Capital area, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I distributed them to, are you gonna see you along?
Yes.
Could I get you to take her son?
Yes.
They're right there in the the binder, the folder.
Oh, okay, yes, very good.
Um, I already distributed the ones to the community center and.
I'm sorry, what was, where was the money from, at the organization?
Oh, working it up right now, she's working it up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I forget the name.
So so Carrie, what you're saying is the first two paragraphs kind of the non-smoking specific. I think that smoking policies should apply to any substance, not just tobacco. Because frankly, I don't wanna be in a meeting where people are smoking a prescription substance.
Well, and vaping too.
Well, the smoking does go down under definition.
On the definition, it does. It has all kinds of stuff here. I've never heard of most of them.
In Hilaire's.
Yeah, you're covered. Wow.
Carrie, it's the healthy communities of the capital area.
Okay, I don't remember that, about how much were we expecting?
Three hundred.
Three hundred fifty dollars, okay.
All right, well, it looks good to me.
That that was more just to combine it and put it all in one place rather than trying to reword it because.
Let's go through them all, then we'll go back to see if there's action we're gonna take.
I'd like, I'd actually like to do the personnel policy next. Because in looking.
Yeah, chapter eleven.
Eleven, yeah. Okay, because what I was noticing is we actually have four defined types of employees. One is a full time, one is a regular part time by discretion of the selectmen specifically naming naming them as regular part time. And then a part time is part time. Eleven point one employee.
Full time, regular part time.
And then a temporary.
A temporary.
And so I wanted to make sure that all of the things, because some of the things in here refer to just full time or just part time, well, part time, do you mean regular part time or part time, part time? So I went through and that that was major, and I tried to just highlight what I was changing. I didn't change the actual intentions of it, but so the biggest thing to me is that we have the four different types of employees, and I don't think, I didn't realize it. So I kind of needed your help. We don't have any full time employees.
Right.
We have, who do you consider, who have you officially named and designated as a regular part time that are entitled to vacation, et cetera?
Well, anybody that meets the state qualification on that minimum.
Well, no, because we have the, the way this was worded before I touched it is that the select board designates the category of regular part time in granting benefits to vacation, et cetera. But then we also have the paid time off, which was the law that went into effect last January, which covers everybody else, including temporary.
Well, most, most of everybody would be part time.
Right.
Now, who's who's regular?
Now, I'm thinking that the clerk is a regular part time because they've been granted vacation time benefits per se.
They're elected.
But that they're an employee, we still have to, they are, elected employees are not entitled to paid time off except by special designation, so I think that's where that special designation came in.
Elected employees don't fall under that state minimum.
Right.
It says you get an hour paid time off for every forty hours work or whatever.
Right.
So what do they get?
What about the assistant? That would be Heather only.
She's not elected.
She's not elected.
She's, yeah.
So.
It's literally Lee and Heather.
What about transfer station?
No, not elected.
That's why.
Lee and Heather are the only two people currently that are in that category.
Right.
They're both elected officials.
And Lee, Lee hasn't been designated regular part time, so he doesn't get the vacation pay.
Right, but Lee is elected only in the road commissioner.
Right, I suppose if he's grading a road, he's now a town employee, that's the way we thought it.
Right.
Still curious how that.
Or if he's plowing.
Well, plowing's under contract, that's not town.
No, plowing's contract. So that all of, um, Lee is elected and he actually is paid as, he's paid as an employee, but it's as a road commissioner elected person, because he's in charge of hiring the people. Now, his employees under Lee do fall under the paid time off category. So I have to track those, so they get paid time off. The clerk gets vacation time. She is not entitled to paid time off. But then you come down to other employees like myself, Alice, Rachel, we're just part time employees. So we don't get holiday vacation, we get paid time off under the state mandate.
Because you don't work enough hours or because?
Anything under thirty seven hours is part time. And the selectmen have designated the clerk as regular part time in consistent ongoing category.
But she also is under thirty seven hours.
Right, but she is, she would not be entitled to the paid time off because she's elected.
Okay.
But the way I took it is the select board has designated her as regular part time to have vacation and sick time. But nobody else does, as far as I know.
Does she have one of them?
I need to know.
Charlie, he comes under part time.
And he doesn't get any benefits?
Or temporary.
Um, actually, both.
Wow.
He's part time, he's temporary, because it's not more than, actually, it is more than three months consecutive. So he's part time, but he gets paid time off under the state statute. So he gets one hour for every forty hours, he doesn't get vacation.
Right.
He gets paid time off.
This is a good way to get a headache, you know?
Well, tell me about it, because I'm all of a sudden, I'm like, how am I supposed to?
Well, I mean, unrelated.
This is a major job for her.
Unrelated, no. You take transfer stations, for example. They're gonna be closed for Christmas holidays, they're open the next day, and Sunday's a normal working day. They're also decide Megan's, you know, fine with being open New Year's Day. You know, we've not really come up with a policy around, you know, they can have holidays for situations like this. I mean, other places, if you have to work New Year's Day at five and a half, for example. You know, it's another thing that maybe we should be folded into this equation. Furthermore, you know, for somebody like the clerk, who I guess follows whatever the state closed days are, you know, we should really define that right in the warrant, if we're putting the maximum hours and the hourly pay right in the warrant.
Right.
Plus X paid holiday based on the state or whatever, I mean, it shouldn't be a surprise to anybody.
Juneteenth, is that a state holiday?
Yeah.
It is now. The state is closed.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure about that.
And she's gonna be open on the day after Christmas until two. Do you see that? That was on Facebook.
Who was?
Megan.
Megan.
Yeah, I mean, that's a normal hour.
No.
No.
Till two.
Oh, until two, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I did not do that.
So she's being gracious and.
Shouldn't that, no, because that's a budgetary thing. I'm just asking, shouldn't that go, well.
I don't think we just, I don't think we, I don't think we took out known holidays for the fiscal year.
What I'm saying is if she's opening the next day for longer, shouldn't the selectmen have been approving that?
Well, we have, I mean, she's fine budget wise.
Yeah, she's within her.
Well, she's not making any more money, she's not, oh, is she gonna get paid for Christmas?
No.
Well, no, but that's my point.
So she, she's not making any more.
Before we're done with this, we should figure out really what are, whether we do have a policy on holidays.
She probably could be.
Then she should say a couple of weeks ago that you were gonna pay them for Christmas? If they were gonna be closed?
I would.
We never have.
No.
And we don't have it in. And where do you?
Get the money.
Well, where do you get the money and where do you draw the line?
Right, right.
Okay, um.
Then who else?
Who else gets paid for Christmas just because it happens to fall on a Saturday?
And they're not working.
Right.
And you have to put it into something like this.
Your way ahead on transfer station budget.
Wow.
I don't think she's expecting to get paid for Saturday, but.
No, I don't.
I I'm not saying that it's a bad idea, it's just.
We have to vote on it.
There are a lot of things that we have to decide before we can say, yes, she should get paid.
Yeah.
Because.
Well, yeah.
Who else gets paid for Christmas?
Nobody.
Nobody.
Why, just because it happens on Saturday?
I think, I think Anna should get.
If it happens.
If it happens on Monday.
On Tuesday, I can assure you the clerk would.
They would be off.
Yeah, and if it happens on Tuesday, would they expect to be paid for?
And the day before.
Yeah, that's, I don't put it in our minutes.
And actually, Saturday, I usually work Saturday, so I should be good.
And we should.
For Christmas, but I'm gonna be working anyway.
I was gonna bring up anyway is benefits, at some point, we need to talk about benefits, and this is gonna move us into that.
This is gonna move us into it, but first we have to be real clear about when we're separating out different types of employees, and that's why I went through and did all of this. Because we have to get them really straight.
Time is, that's a, I don't know.
So if you're not gonna pay her for Christmas, shouldn't she get allowed to work another day?
They're fine.
Huh?
They're fine, we don't have to do anything.
She says she wants to work a couple hours on Sunday extra.
She wants to stay open, it's really a service to the community that.
So she can make up those hours.
So she's making only only two of them up, but.
Yeah, because I know she depends on that paycheck.
You better put it on the sign out here, until they take it away from us.
Oh, we can put it on our more ugly sign. Do you have any people complaining about that?
Not yet, anyway.
I think we should have a drone that just has a flag with letters, "Dust is open," and fly it around. Okay, sorry.
Never say anything.
Okay, so anyway, I I wasn't trying to be a pain in the neck, but that's when I'm going through this, going, I gotta paste this in all these different places, and it started to really scare me because it it does have some implications, I didn't change any of the
Yeah.
the meanings of things, but it does, because you insert the clarification of the type.
If we designate through policy during the fiscal year that certain people get certain paid days off, we would have to make sure that doesn't it's not in violation of whatever we voted at town meeting. All right, so some of the budgets, some of the positions, you know, were not specified, so, you know, specifically like that, so we'd be fine either way. And others, others say X hours per year period, and, you know, there's an overall budget for the salary in the warrant. So I don't believe that we would have the authority to exceed that because we're adding some holiday pay. That's what we have to be careful about.
Right.
So that's why I'm thinking that in addition to a policy, which we need to, you know, consider updating, obviously we are, you know, we might need to add something to the warrant next year to recognize that certain employees might get certain holiday pay or whatever, if that's what we're gonna do.
And the biggest thing is you have to make sure that it's real straightforward and not person specific.
Right, not person specific.
Yeah.
We're never voting on Megan and Heather, we're voting on position of, yeah, I totally agree.
And then actually, you run into trouble, problems if you vote specifically on a position too, because you've got to have an overall policy so that you're treating everybody fairly.
Right.
You can't give this person these health insurance and somebody else who works the same hours.
But you know, I will say that at the same time, there's plenty of people, like librarians, for example, they normally work for a Saturday. Well, I mean, they've never in a million years, how long have they been in a library, a hundred years or whatever, expected to get paid for Christmas, which is not a day they work. So we don't want to all of a sudden force holiday pay on somebody that, you know, that never expected that or whatever.
So what I'm going to recommend is that really take this as it is, don't adopt it officially.
Yeah.
Because right now, as far as I can tell, what we have isn't isn't legit. Don't adopt this.
We haven't been like following through, let's put it that way, I wouldn't say it's not legit, but we might not have designated somebody.
Right, but, and I've tried to incorporate the paid time off because you don't, um, paid time off, the leave of, leave pay was put into effect for the state to give people the opportunity to go to the doctor, stay home sick what they needed, when they needed to, without being fired or whatever. So it made companies, if they don't provide vacation pay, you still have to give the employee some time to take care of things. So if we have people that have vacation pay that more than exceeds the one hour for every forty, they they're not covered on the PTO. They have their own vacation. And PTO, I have been tracking that. But you need to help me so I have a clear definition, so I knew, need to know which goes where.
That guarantees that you owe an hour off every forty. That guarantees that you owe an hour off every forty work as a kind of baseline minimum for workers in Maine.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that doesn't come into play if they are to get more time off than that normally.
Right.
So you don't have to run the calculation, because you know a year ahead of time, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
And...
Because it maxes out at forty.
Uh...
Or whatever, there's some maximum to it.
Yeah, you can't take more than forty hours in a given year. You can accrue it forever.
So if the position already includes forty hours, there's no reason to run the calculation.
Right.
Okay, I gotcha. Yeah.
So do we have anybody that's regular part-time?
Heather. Because she gets vacation.
Heather? Okay.
So she's the only one?
Mm-hmm.
She works less than thirty-seven hours?
What is Lee? Lee is not?
Lee is not, because, well, I don't think so, because I don't know of anybody else who's been designated as a regular part-time, and this says that they have to be specifically designated. These aren't my words, this was in here. And I think it was put there so that you could give vacation time to certain employees or certain positions. So we just have to be careful around that. And it can stand this way, but it just has to be known, and like, you have to make sure the treasurer knows that somebody is designated.
Personnel file, and each employee should be designated, so it's clear to carry.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah, that's it.
Position by position, yeah.
Yeah. So that's, that's what I would recommend, so go off and think if you want to adopt this now as is, and then think about changing it, um, for the budgetary. Now, look at the implications for the budget, because there are some pretty hefty ones. It's also a little tricky, because, okay, um, this is a small town. You don't have backups for people if, if Megan and George both wanna take a vacation for the second week of July. What are you gonna do? I mean, you have to think about the implications.
Working the dump.
Yeah.
Got it.
We get to take home everything we want.
Exactly, first dibs, first dibs.
Okay, so, you know, this goes on to talk about the eligibility, et cetera. So I did put the paid time off in here, so the wording's there.
And just for my knowledge, the, the state policy, the new state policy, this board voted on it the beginning of twenty twenty-one, before my, about tenure, is that right?
This was a very old policy.
No, the paid...
The PTO.
The PTO.
Yeah.
We had to vote on that.
We had to.
Okay, yeah.
And actually, the biggest thing, we had to vote on it to make an official word as to whether, um, we would accrue it if somebody left, were they eligible to, to get paid? And we said, no, they, they leave unused, they lose. So...
All right, so let's keep moving.
Okay, I did a lot of work on that, but I just, there are a lot of more questions to it, so I'm sorry. Okay, so back to first new, or fiscal, or final, financial, chapter eight. Yeah, uh, first of all, the highlight is special town meeting on March eighth, nineteen ninety-seven. Yeah, well. Okay, what I did is, most of it had no bearings on what is actually happening, so I took and broke it into receding, disbursements, um, budgeting, so I worked a whole bunch of policies into this one place. And this is pretty much, um, actually, the clerks, Heather and I had an interesting discussion about the receding, um, eight point...
The return checks you covered in the warrant article.
Yeah. Yeah.
Does that, does that agree with, with what the warrant article said?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. That I did change, so, because it had an amount in there originally. Um, down, daily cash-ups, and then reporting reconciliation. Heather and I, and this is something that I want to clarify with Trill too. Um, remember, I've said, when they do a daily cash-up, and they find an error, I get the cash sheets that with the penciled-in amount, which means if you run a monthly report, it's not going to, going to match
Right.
what I've recorded, because it doesn't have that adjustment in. Heather says there is no way to go back and fix that. And I said, well, then we need to pressure Trill
Yep.
as far as how to go fix that.
Oh, you got that one?
Yeah.
All right.
Um, because it, we talked about this again, and, and she's like, well, it is what it is, you have the paper reports. And I said, yeah, but what it means is, none of my, none, none of the reports out of the computer will match
Right.
what we have.
I can literally have a law meeting at all times to...
Right. So, okay, so then there's the disbursements, the payroll, and actually, the personnel policy refers to, back to the payroll here, so that we can change things based on the timing of turning in payroll. Uh, there is a new piece that I added. I do it, but I don't memorialize it when I prepare the warrant. I have a printout from Peachtree, the financials, that says, this is the amount, and it matches what the bottom is on the warrant that you've signed, and then the disbursement checks are run based on that. Uh, what I should be doing is filing that computer printout in with the warrant that you've signed. So that's the reconciliation there. Um, and then we have the special employee wage benefit, which says one person can sign for, um, payroll only.
Mm-hmm.
And the fiscal responsibility, that's what I put together, and let's just put back in here, saying, flagging and memorializing a way of making sure that we know when people are going off the budget, and making a conscious decision on how to...
So if somebody goes over five percent relative to the point in the budget
Right.
by the end of July, you're on warrant as every single warrant, so it gets up, gets to be even with where they should be at.
It probably won't, unless it's like the Tara account or...
Yeah, in which case, it, it's a matter of just documenting it, you know, to make sure that it's a conscious decision to say, yeah, we know that, um, uh, Rachel is working extra hours, put a name on it, sorry. Rachel is working extra hours because Heather's been out, but Heather is going to be back, so there's no remediation needed. You know, just a conscious...
Right.
And then, yeah, it will be flagged, but we can just say, yeah, we know, the next time. So it should be pretty straightforward, but it keeps it in front of us. To say, should we do a remediation? Do we need to change something? Do we need to get more money there?
Right.
Or cut something off?
That's that second paragraph under the way through this first one, or earlier, what's that for?
Uh...
Policy in addition to non-admitted hours of major power.
What section are you looking at?
Eight point, eight point five. Okay, this was something when we did that policy originally, to allow for one signature on a payroll warrant. That was something that MMA put, said to put in there. This was copied from one of their...
That, that paragraph is MMA law?
Yes, so that it's not saying that this...
Is that still a valid statute? Because they changed from, we're gonna remove, we might wanna double-check that.
Okay, I can double-check that.
Yeah, because, you know, I, I look at state statutes a lot, and sometimes it'll be like, they'll put, they'll have a whole thing, like, remove, remove, removed, or whatever the word is, you know? You never know, they're not forever.
Okay, well, we, we could actually take that out and just say, delegation of authority pursuant to state statute.
Yeah.
But I'll go check and make sure that's, okay. That was just so that this wasn't to preempt the whole warrant process, this was an emergency kind of thing.
Comes in every time, yeah, I gotcha.
Uh, failure to comply, I don't know if we could actually do that, but, uh, completed failure or inability to comply with any of these policies or grounds for removal from office if the official was elected or terminated if the official was appointed. We don't have a town charter.
Yeah.
And we got nothing other than state statute to fall back on to recall an elected official, if you will.
Oh, this, this was already in there.
Well, that doesn't mean...
So, I know, but I didn't come up with that, that was already in here, but...
That is something that, I'm sure that Bob has an interest in this area, um, but, you know, I always thought, and it might not, it'll be a good idea, it's one of these days, to maybe come up with a town, a new town charter that spells all these things out, you know? I don't mean this policy, but I mean in general.
Yeah.
You know, like, that, like, that is an area that can be really difficult for small towns. If you have a bad elected official, basically, how do you remove that?
There's...
There are state statutes around that that cover it, but, you know, a lot of communities end up, you know, paying a lot of money, have lawyers draft up a town charter, and they have meetings, and then you adopt it, and it lays fall out. You know, you get a hundred people to sign, or whatever, you know, whatever it is, and you can have a recall election or...
And then they run the next time, and they get voted in.
Well, we, we don't have a town charter, right?
It's supposed to be ninety.
Yeah, does that count?
No, that's, that's incorporation, that's not...
Incorporation, yeah.
There's very few small towns that have charters there.
So let's, I have no, no commitment to this eight point ten, or you wanna just strike that?
I would.
I just don't think we have the
Authority.
Authority to make that statement.
Okay, and eight point eleven was already there, so I'm not taking any...
Well, you don't have to strike the whole thing, though, it's just if the official is elected.
Okay.
Yeah, just the elected portion. Yeah, just elected, that's all.
Yeah.
So removal from office, should you remove that too?
Yeah.
Removal from office?
Well, no, we're...
Just say for termination of the...
Carrie's gonna be editing it, but we're just removing if the official is elected.
Okay. Got it.
Oh, yeah, you're right, I see what you're saying, Alex. Grounds for removal...
From office.
Grounds, yeah, we can basically say it's grounds for termination
Right.
if the official is appointed. In fact, instead of official, it's just as employee.
Yeah.
And if you're gonna be doing those things, there's a couple of places where it says selectmen, that should be.
Selectmen.
Yeah.
And then town office hours, so we don't seem to have anything to do with setting those hours. I don't know why we have it in here.
It was there, I didn't put it there.
Well, technically, we can, but the clerk doesn't care, so...
Though she works more than twenty-eight hours a week, though, doesn't she?
Well, this is really old life.
Yeah, didn't we have, didn't we see that?
I think she's...
Well, it's interesting to go over this, because a lot of...
We might as well just strike that whole section.
Yeah.
The town's hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I may be terminated.
You may be terminated.
With, with cause, has to be with cause.
Well, I'm over hours, so that's if you're over hours.
You better be careful, because that's lacking.
Which one of you would like to take my job?
Not me.
So I guess it's your job to make sure that we don't leave this on the shelf for ten years straight.
Yeah.
Yay, I did one thing right. Sorry about that.
All right, so eight fifteen.
Okay, and the other thing is, that the last point was the adoption renewal, which is a very
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
All right. Yeah?
Okay.
All right, so we're not thinking any, uh, no...
No, hard action.
No action, no.
No, we made the...
Thank Carrie for, uh...
Oh, uh, here's the other thing.
Oh, you're, you're coming.
Thank you, Carrie. So we have before us, I assume this came from Heather?
Yes.
We have before us tonight supplemental tax warrants.
Actually, from Roger.
Oh, yeah.
From Roger, I'm sorry. Uh, you're hereby directed to levy and collect from the person named below blah blah blah. So the first one, the supplemental tax of five thousand seventeen dollars and seven cents.
They, they already have the checks, they just can't process them until we tell you sign them.
This is removal of one point seven five acres from tree growth, okay, so they're paying every growth penalty to take one point seven five acres out of tree growth. This is off, off-journey Zen Road.
Yeah, I think both of them are.
And then there's another one on the north road, different person, farmland removal penalty, twenty-eight thirty-seven, so... This came right from Roger, so I guess I would motion that we sign those with a supplemental tax.
That's it.
All in favor? Um, I assume that these three lines are for us to sign?
Yes, uh, yeah, so I guess they didn't put a name.
All right.
Carrie, I thought I interrupted you earlier with the policies, is that what you were gonna bring up? Or did you have another thing to bring up?
I think that, that was it.
Okay. Just wanted to check before we...
And we voted to accept this, right?
Yep.
Let's see the...
Three nothing.
Okay.
All righty.
For you.
Are you motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that, all in favor? Three nothing.
Eight seventeen.
Good job, Paul.
Other than that, that striking that we just talked about, is there anything else that you'd like me to do with the policies? Or do you want to mull it over? Or do you want to mull it over?